Welcome to the Scottsdale Vibes Podcast. I'm Alicia Haygood. We are going to spend this summer getting to know our Scottsdale City Council candidates that are running here in office. Elections are June 30th, or excuse me, elections are July 30th in person. Ballots are being mailed out July 5th. Please, please, please go vote. If, I don't care who you vote for, just go vote. It is your right. Take advantage. Get to know your candidates. Everybody was asked the same four questions. Everyone was allotted 15 minutes. You're going to have three episodes, with each episode having three of the candidates. Take your time and listen all month, and I encourage you more than anything to reach out to any candidates to ask additional questions. They genuinely want to hear from you. So this week, we're going to start off, and the candidates that you're going to listen to this week are Tammy Caputi, Tom Durham, and Mary Ann McAllen. So let's get started. Buying a home can be scary and sometimes frustrating, but all of that can go away with the right realtor. And that's where Sean Shackleton with the Shackleton Group is here for you. Sean has over 25 years' experience in real estate. She's here to get you what you want and won't settle for less. She's experienced, knowledgeable, and understands this market, which these days is always changing. Take the stress out of your next home purchase by calling Sean at 480-734-7277. You can also find her at the shackletongroup.com. I'm sitting here with Tammy Caputi, who is running for city council again. She began her first term on Scottsdale City Council in January of 2021, and is currently seeking a second term. She's lived and worked in Scottsdale for almost 25 years as the president and owner of Yale Electric West Incorporated, and a Scottsdale, which is a Scottsdale company. She's been married for over 21 years, has three daughters who attend all of our local schools. She holds a Bachelor of Arts degree in economics from Wes, oh, Wellesley. Thank you. I was like, I pronounced this wrong last time. Wellesley College in Wellesley, Massachusetts, and a Master's in Business Administration from Simmons University in Boston, Massachusetts. She is passionate about keeping Scottsdale the gold standard of the valley, and she is always running. I will start with the questions, and I'm going to ask everyone the same four questions. So thank you so much for being here with us today. Let's start talking about the plans of the homeless population and affordable housing here in Scottsdale, and how we should deal with this.
Sure. Well, first of all, those are two separate things. I mean, obviously, housing is a continuum, but those are two separate things. So we'll talk about homelessness first. I always want to remind people that homelessness in Scottsdale, of course, we know that it's a problem. It's a problem everywhere, but we actually are doing a wonderful job of managing our homeless population in Scottsdale. At our last point in time count, we had 64 unhoused homeless folks in our city. Again, in a population of 242,000-ish, we're doing a fantastic job here in the city. So it's super important to address the folks that can be helped. You know, we're really concentrating our efforts in making sure that people either don't get on the street or get off as quickly as possible. So some of the things we're doing in the city that are working really well, we have day relief centers where people can get out of the extreme heat. We've partnered with our community partner, Community Bridges is what they're called, and we bring people in during the day, give them referrals to employment, plug them in to the different government agencies that they might need help with, help them with case management documents that might be needed. That program goes three days a week, two days in the city property, and one day with a church that we partner with. So again, trying to meet people where they are, give them the opportunity and the resources and the tools to help keep them and get them off the streets. We do outreach and navigation, again, with Community Bridges. We're actually outreach to people on the street with our police department, also using our libraries to help people navigate through some of the bureaucracy of what might be needed to get re-employed, to find housing. We have an emergency bridge housing program, very small, just again, for people in desperate need, handful of rooms, temporary safe overnight shelter for our own seniors and single parents. And we're only providing emergency bridge housing for people who actually have a strategy to be rehoused. So these are folks who are, you know, couldn't make the rent payment, ended up in an emergency, needed a temporary place. We help them get back on their feet and move them back to permanent housing as soon as possible. Last thing we're doing is Scottsdale Works, which is a really cool program, offering minimum wage opportunities for folks. We partner with Phoenix Rescue Mission on this particular program, and we're giving people opportunity to do work needed in our parks and different west world. Being able to earn that minimum wage gives people, you know, confidence and the ability to move forward with their lives. So again, the idea is meet people where they are, get them rehabilitated, get them back into housing as immediately as possible. We've got a whole bunch of community resource centers, the Paute Center, Vista del Camino, we have Granite Reef and Viola Linda for senior centers. We certainly want to keep funding those programs. We've also got community block development grants that are federal funds, and we try to target those towards organizations that are actually moving the needle on homelessness, like family promise and folks who have measurable success. But again, fairly small problem in the city of Scottsdale in terms of numbers, and we are all over it. So affordable housing is a whole other conversation. You know, it is, I've been looking at this problem for the last three or four years that I've been on the council, and what I've decided is that it is really difficult to provide in the city of Scottsdale. So it's, it's really just more of a math problem. Land here is very expensive and scarce. We have the strictest of construction standards. We don't want people to go dense or high. We have a very limited amount of available land left. We have concentrated our multifamily developments only in our growth and activity areas. There's basically no more land to build out for single-family homes. It's just really, really difficult to get affordable projects to pencil out. It's illegal to set rents in the state of Arizona. So everything gets determined by the market. And again, when you have extremely expensive land, extremely high standards, very long process for approval, neighbors that get very engaged, it can take years to get projects over the finish line. We've only approved six projects in four years in my term of city council. Two of those are never going to happen. The rest of them, only one has actually started. Think about that in four years. So people have this feeling that we're doing so much. A lot of what you're seeing today was approved up to a decade ago. We're really not doing much. It's very hard to get the projects to pencil out at an affordable rate. And so honestly, I just don't know without more political will that we could provide truly affordable housing in the city of Scottsdale.
To go along with that, and everything else, water is obviously a big issue. It's in the desert. It's a luxury. And, you know, talking about the building and stuff like that. How are your, what are your plans to help Scottsdale residents keep their water?
Cute, the way you phrase it, keep their water like that. Well, one thing to remember again about the city of Scottsdale is that we are on top of it. We live in the desert. We've been planning for drought conditions for decades. So it's not like we just woke up and said, oh, my God, we have a water problem, right? Which, I'm going to say that we actually don't have a water problem in the city of Scottsdale, again, because we've been incredibly proactive. And you mentioned the building. Again, we don't wake up and say, oh, we're going to approve this project. We have a general plan. We've got multiple subplans that go underneath that. We're being extremely careful and deliberate with how we're expanding. Our population's been growing less than 1% per year for the last decade. We are not, no longer in a growth cycle in the city of Scottsdale. So we are being super careful. We have a drought management plan here in the city for our water, and that implements progressively, progressively more actionable processes as we start, as the water on the Colorado River gets impacted. We have a plan that batches us down to do different things as the situation starts to progress. So our plan is very specific. It's available on our website. It's got all the steps needed to respond. We have an incredibly diverse water portfolio here in the city of Scottsdale, so we don't depend on any one particular source of water. We have been investing in our infrastructure and technology for years. For instance, we have ASR wells right now, aquifer, storage, and recovery wells that allow us to recharge water into the aquifer when the demand is low, like in the winter, and then draw it back out during the summer when we need it. We are incredibly sophisticated in terms of recycling water in the city of Scottsdale. We have the most sophisticated water treatment plant almost in the country. We're able to provide highly purified recycled water. And again, we, we take all of our indoor sewer returns and water returns in the city of Scottsdale, recycle it to drinking water standards, and put it back in the aquifer like a water savings bank for the future. So people have an idea, they talk a lot about, you've approved an apartment building, how can you do that with a water problem? Apartments actually use far less water than a multifamily or different type of development, and we recapture all the water from an indoor use. So we are actually recycling all of that water. It's, it's actually the sustainable thing to do. So again, we're expanding all of our conservation programs. We do not have mandates in the city of Scottsdale. We ask people to please be considerate with our scarce resources. We're one of the only cities or states in the country that has a hundred, we have to prove a 100-year water supply in order to approve a project. We're requiring all of our projects these days to be able to show us their water use to actually bring additional water if they're a large user. I mean, we're trying to check every box. So I think the residents of Scottsdale can rest assured that we are watching every drop at the municipal level. We're encouraging any program that promotes people to be careful stewards, and we are looking far into the future, making sure that we're careful with our resources.
Fantastic. The Blue Zone Initiative would be a great addition to our community. We all love being healthy here in Scottsdale. How will you help make Scottsdale Blue Zone certified?
We're already part of that program, which is really cool. And I was part of it. In case it's not obvious on camera, I'm fairly fit. It's kind of a passion of mine. I've been an exercise freak all my life, so I was instrumental in really getting that program pushed through, and I've wanted to be included from the start. I think that Scottsdale in general is the perfect city, right? We're, we're rolling it out right now. We're already starting to certify. I think Arcadia Farms was one of the first restaurants that got the checkbox. It just fits our brand, right? We want more live, work, play. We want open areas. We want parks. We celebrate our beautiful, beautiful preserve. We want to be thinking about our clean water sources, our breathable air. Again, rolling it out to our beautiful city, keeping traffic under control, making sure that we have enough roadways, that we have multimodal roadways where people can walk and bike, and, and everyone gets to use the road, which is what we're trying to do. We're not taking away any lanes from, from vehicles. We're actually making the road more usable for absolutely everyone. We want the downtown area to be more walkable, to have more shade in general, for people to just be able to be healthy here in the city.
We have just a few minutes left, so our last question, the short-term rentals and noise complaints, it's been on the agenda, and it's been a complaint for years. I've been here five years, and that's all I've heard about. City councils pass new rules already and regulations on these short-term rental homeowners. The problem is still in some neighborhoods. What are your suggestions that city council can do?
I mean, we've done a lot. We're sort of the cutting edge of this. We've done more than any other city. We, we developed a task force. We made some recommendations. We rolled out absolutely everything we could in terms of licensing, fining, holding bad users accountable. We just, on May 6th, passed an additional set of rules and regulations to help to punish nuisance parties and not allow minors to rent STRs. The two best things we can do is state bill 1205 and House Bill 2489, which are city-sponsored measures that we're trying to lobby the legislature for, and those will limit density and number of short-term rentals inside of a particular neighborhood, as well as the distance between them. Because I think the problem is with these short-term rentals, they overtake a neighborhood. One here or there that's a good player is fine. It's when they start to, the whole neighborhood becomes a hotel. You didn't get a chance to ask me about why I'm running and why people should vote for me. I didn't want to lose that question.
You have time for it. You're good.
Okay, good. So I was rushing the STR question.
You're okay. You answered that one. And so tell us, why should we vote for Tammy Caputi for city council again?
Tammy Caputi has a proven track record of being a positive, forward-thinking, balanced voice for the city. I've been doing this job for almost four years. The residents have invested in me, and, and now I have the tools and the school and the skill set to continue. So in my four years on council, we have managed to keep our budget in the black and actually increase our cash reserves, managing the city through a global pandemic and world-record inflation. We've increased high-paying jobs by 10%. We fully funded our public safety and paid down their pensions. We've added 80 new lane miles of roadway. We've decreased our water usage despite slightly increasing population. We passed a 10-year general plan, including education as a separate element. We got a handle on short-term rentals, and we've approved only one handful of the highest-quality development projects, all with measurable community benefit. Scottsdale is an aspirational city. We are the gold standard of the valley. It's high amenities and open space, strong property values, lowest property taxes. That all works because we have an incredibly vibrant economy here. City works on business activity, not bedroom activity. I am here because I want to maintain that golden formula that keeps us moving forward into the future in a positive direction.
You did it. You made it. And thank you so much. Seriously, best of luck to your election coming up again. And don't forget, tammycaputi.com. We will also have the link to her website to learn more about her in the description of this episode and on our YouTube channel. I know that she'd love to hear from you, because that's what she does in all of the city councils running. I encourage you to reach out and talk to them yourselves. This is what they want to hear from you. Thank you, Tammy, again, for being here, and best of luck in the elections coming up.
Thank you, Alicia.
I am here with city council Tom Durham, who is up for reelection this year. Tom grew up in a small town in Iowa, and he attended Cornell College in Mount Vernon, Iowa. Some of his earliest memories are here, visiting his grandfather in Mesa, and he had a pasture behind the house where they rode horses, and it's still standing, actually, down the, right down the street. And now, let's see, but the pasture is now a dirt parking lot for the stadium. How funny is that? It just goes to show that he's really seen how this valley has changed and been here over time. After graduating from Cornell, Tom attended NYU Law School, where he moved on to DC, and he practiced at Meyer Brown at an international law firm. He had offices throughout the United States and the world. He specialized in tax controversy, representing the firm's clients in audit trials and appeals against the IRS. He has argued several appeals to the Circuit Court of Appeals for the District of Columbia, which is generally regarded as the second most important court in the United States. His ability to analyze complex legal and factual situations and to quote-unquote "cut through" to the heart of the matter are essential to the city council. During his time at Meyer Brown, he was recognized by chambers across the US as one of the top 25 tax controversy lawyers in the US. He retired from Meyer Brown in April 2015, and has lived in Scottsdale, where he is now on the council and running for reelection. So we are going to start here by asking Mr. Tom Durham some questions. All right, Tom, to start with, talk about your plans to handle the homeless population and affordable housing here in Scottsdale as it's been increasing.
We have a bridge housing program, which has been very successful. It operates out of a hotel, and when people are temporarily homeless, for whatever reason, we're able to put them into that hotel where they can have a stable place to live and get back on their feet. It's been extremely successful, because 70% to 80% of the people in that program are able to get into long-term housing within three or four months. It's been very safe. Last time I checked, there were no police calls for service there. And the people in this program, there's, there's a misperception among many people that the homeless are often drug addicts and alcoholics, and the people in this program are not. They're just people who, for reasons outside of their control, have run into a hard spell. And I've met many of these people. One of them was a single mother with several children, and the pipes in her house burst, and the landlord didn't get them fixed up. So her house was unlivable. So she had to find a place to live. Our services were able to put her into this hotel, where she was able to get back on her feet and find permanent housing within a few months. So some people know I was very upset with Representative Grass concerning this. Representative Grass hopped into town and said, oh, you're just like San Francisco. And the differences are just crazy, and it's an insult to us to say that we're like San Francisco. San Francisco operates around 100 hotels, I think, and they have, I think it was around 8,000 to 10,000 people in these hotels. And with the problem of that size, with a program this size, you just can't manage it. People are definitely going to fall through the cracks, and the program's not going to work. We keep it small. We keep it manageable, and we make sure that we deliver good results for the people living there and help them out. On the homeless front, we have several apartments that we have purchased that we're able to offer at, at rates that would be affordable to more people. We are looking to buy more of those apartments and to provide more housing. It's difficult to do in a city such as Scottsdale, which is very expensive, as we all know, but we're working to do that. Another thing that we've been trying to do is to work with developers, to have them provide more workforce housing in new developments, and several developers have agreed to do that. Those projects haven't been built yet, but when they are, they're going to offer some portion of their housing to people in the workforce. So below, you know, below a certain income range. So those are some of the things we've been doing.
Next question. We live in the desert. Water is an issue. It's a desert issue everywhere. It tends to be very common hot topic right here in Scottsdale right now. What are your plans to help Scottsdale residents keep their water?
Well, we have a, an amazing water department. They're really world-class. We were one of the first cities in the nation, maybe in the world, to do recycling of water, and we can bring that water, we can bring dirty water up to drinking standards. And we're one of the first in the nation, or in the world, to do that. So we can recycle the water that comes from our houses, apartments, and so on, and turn that back into drinking water. And we also can bank some of that water in underground reservoirs. You may not know it, but under our feet, we have huge amounts of water that we've banked and stored away. We've passed a number of laws, ordinances, to work on water conservation. When we have a new development, we make sure that they're using water-conscious appliances. We are working on making sure that even the rainwater is recycled. We had a new project that we approved a few months ago called The Park up on North Scottsdale, and all of their irrigation water is going to be recycled. The water from irrigating trees, plants, they've, they're going to put in a system which captures a good amount of that water, sends it back for recycling, and they're even going to recycle rainwater that comes in. So we're doing all we can to protect our water. And we also stood up to the state regarding the Rio Verde issue last year. You know, the state wanted to carve off part of our water to send up to Rio Verde, and we made it clear that that was not going to happen. We stood together on the council and were able to defend our water resources and came up with a good result on that.
The Blue Zones Initiative is a great addition to our community. I've, I've had them on the podcast before. How will you help make Scottsdale Blue Zone certified?
Well, I've attended many of the Blue Zone planning meetings, and we recently opened a new restaurant. That was one of the first to be Blue Zone certified in Chicago. I wasn't able to make that ribbon-cutting, but I'm going to try to make others. You know, the Blue Zone Project is a great project. I think people in Scottsdale want to be healthy. We want to stay outside. We want to extend our lives and lead good lives. So there's a lot in the Blue Zone project that allows us to do that. One of the resources that people can contact is thebluzoneprojectscottsdale.com. If you go to that website, there's a lot of information about how you can be involved in Blue Zones, and how you can do that both individually, through your work, through your neighborhood. A lot of good information there. It's, it's a great project. I'm glad that we're signed up for it, and I'm glad to be part of that.
We're constantly dealing with short-term rentals and noise complaints. The city council has passed many new rules and regulations to short-term rental homeowners over the past couple of years. Doesn't, the problem's not always going away. I know you've held the homeowners and the investors liable for it. What are your suggestions to continue dealing with this nuisance, as some homeowners say?
Well, our biggest problem is the state legislature, as many people know, prohibits us from regulating or limiting short-term rentals, except to certain extent that they've allowed. And so I've worked very hard to try to get the legislature to expand our area of authority. I was with a group that worked with City of Paradise Valley, in our lobbyists, in our city staff, to try to change the state rules, and we were able to do that. We, we, two years ago, I think, we won a little bit more authority in terms of certifications for short-term rentals, and charging fees, and charging fees for abusive rentals, and getting them registered, just so that we'd be able to keep track of them. And at the city council, we've done a lot in that area of working on short-term rentals. One of the things we've done is create a specialized task force in the police, which is specifically to monitor short-term rentals. And our assistant city manager, Brent Stockwell, has done a really, really good job of getting on top of this and helping us to work on this problem. I looked up some recent statistics, and between January and April of this year, we issued 276 citations for short-term rentals. And last year, we issued only 58 citations in all of 2023. So that tells me we are, yeah, it's a big difference. We're beginning to get on top of that. There are resources on the city's website for people to call in, because I've gotten many emails on this subject, probably more than any other subject. And some of them are really heartbreaking, because there are people who feel that they can no longer live in their home because of the disturbance from short-term rentals. So we're going to continue to push the state legislature every way we can to give us more powers. What we'd like to do is to put a cap on short-term rentals at some point, and we'd also like to reduce the density, because often they tend to collect in certain areas where you have three or four that are close to each other, and that's a real problem. So we are trying to cap them. We're trying to reduce the density, and we're going to continue to do everything we can with state legislature, legislature to bring this under control.
Mr. Durham, we have about five minutes left in your time, so I will give you the rest of the time to talk to our listeners and your constituents here in Scottsdale. Why should we vote for Tom Durham?
Well, I'm not a rookie. I've been at this for four years, and there's a tremendous amount to learn in how the city operates, and how the levers of the city operates, where the power is, where the authorities are, and what's needed to be done. And I've been at it four years. The first two years, to be accurate, were a lot of learning. And, but now I'm up and running, and I think we've been very successful on the council over the last few four years. I've developed very good relations with the police department. In fact, I was endorsed by the Police Officers Association recently, and I really have the back of the police officers. We increased fire and police pay. We realized that our fire and police were underpaid compared to the rest of the valley, and we took steps to fix that. I think the current city council has had a very successful run. For many years, the council was unable to pass a general plan. There was one general plan that was turned down by the council. There was another that turned down by the voters. And so one of our first objectives on entering the city council was to write and approve a new general a new general plan. And we were successful in doing that. Betty Janek Slange Whitehead and I, um, Tammy Capooty put in a lot of effort to drafting a new general plan. Uh, we were successful. We got it passed by the city and, uh, by the city voters. And that's really important because it guides the future of Scottsdale. So we're very happy about that. Uh, we have continued to keep our taxes low. Uh, not everybody knows it, but our taxes are just about the lowest in the valley as compared to the rest of the valley. Uh, we have increased cash reserves, um, in our city's funds. Uh, so we're better prepared for a rainy day or for another pandemic, pandemic. Help us.
Yeah, let's not say that word.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, we don't want to, but if it ever comes again, we're more ready for it than we were last time. We have strengthened development standards, uh, by imposing new standards for development. We have, uh, reduced, um, heights in Scottsdale's Old Town, which is where we're sitting today. Um, and, uh, we've approved a limited number of very good buildings, um, that we're very happy with. Not as many as the prior council. Uh, the prior council passed a number of 15-story buildings, which I was very opposed to. And we haven't done that under the current council. We have reduced the height and density of pretty much all of the proposals that have come before us. We've negotiated them heavily. And as I mentioned before, we've protected our water portfolio. So, um, I think we've been very successful. Another thing we've done is we've passed an anti-discrimination ordinance. Uh, we've been very active and I think we've established a good record.
Thank you so much for, um, your term on the city council so far. Best of luck in the upcoming election. Please go to TomDurham2024.com to learn more and we will have more candidates coming up. Tom, thank you so much for joining me today.
Thank you.
When it comes to protecting you, your family and all your assets, you need to have someone that you can trust. And that's Jeremy Mueller of State Farm Insurance. Jeremy Mueller has lived in Scottsdale his whole life. How can anyone else know your needs more than someone who's been here and seen it all? Jeremy and his team are always ranked in the top percent at State Farm. He cares, he's knowledgeable, and most importantly, he's always available. Don't believe me? Give him a call at 480-515-5223, or find him at JeremyMueller.com. Mary Ann McAllen is a proud 59-year resident of Scottsdale. She's a small business owner, a community leader and activist. Mary Ann met her husband Sam while being a summer recreation leader for the city of Scottsdale. They have four young adult children. And a fun fact about Mary Ann, she's an avid antique button collector. That is very interesting, I will say. Mary Ann, we're going to get right to it and start asking the questions. I want to hear from you. Please talk about your plans to handle the homeless population and the affordable housing here in Scottsdale.
So my background with the city of Scottsdale is I worked in community services as well as human services. And that is the part of the city that really does deal with the social welfare of the citizens of Scottsdale. I also worked with the senior center and that is a population that absolutely is becoming more and more homeless. The senior population as well as the, um, very young teenage. But in Scottsdale, we have a handle on it. We have a lot of nonprofits, over 157 nonprofits throughout the valley deal with social services that help the homeless. The city of Scottsdale does a really good job through the Vistito Camino and the Paiute Adult Center, as well as the, um, uh, senior centers Granite Reef and Viola Linda. And I ran the Viola Linda Senior Center from the bottom up. But what the city does through the Human Services Commission is they advocate for the human needs of the citizens of Scottsdale. And we need to continue that. The homeless population reaches out through the churches. The city does a great job at connecting people. And I would like to see more of that. I would like to see more connectivity between nonprofits. We also, um, donate to the Miracopa Countywide, the, um, CAS. There's also the Miracopa County Association of Governments MAG. There are all those interconnected groups that the city needs to continue to work with to build that up as well as looking at the homeless issue and what can we do? How can we help the churches in our area as well as the nonprofits? And educate our citizens about not being afraid, but maybe acting as advocates for people that come into our city, maybe figuring out a way, hey, how, where would I tell this person? I see the same person all the time at this stop. If I'm willing to maybe say, hey, you could get help here, um, maybe there, maybe they're not. But there's always, or they could notify someone from the city, hey, I noticed this in this neighborhood. Can the police reach out? Could someone's social services? But our police department has been excellent and proactive in this area. There's a team that works with it within the city through neighborhood services, through human services, through the police and fire. And they work on it continually. They meet, I believe, quarterly, uh, to discuss the issues of homelessness in the city and where they see trends. And I'd like to continue that as well as be an advocate for groups that may be able to serve that population that want to come into Scottsdale. I'd like to have that conversation with those groups.
Um, we live in, thank you for that, by the way. Uh, you know, we live in the desert. Water is a luxury and it shouldn't be for everyday life. We don't get a handle on it now. We're going to have an issue in the future. So what are your plans to help Scottsdale residents keep their water?
So the city of Scottsdale, uh, is in a great position for the 100-year plan. Every, they just talked about it at city council last night. When new construction comes in, any group that comes in that wants to be building, they need to be able to prove that they have water resources for the next 100 years planned out. Scottsdale was on the forefront of this over 20 years ago, maybe even 22 years ago. They started really looking at water storage, where the water's coming from, how the water's used. And I believe that we're in a really good spot, but the city can't rest on its laurels. It needs to stay, you know, uh, vigilant on the water use development that does happen in the city, whether it's new or old. What type of, um, materials they're using, technology, what can be advanced to, to keep water, um, where it needs to be. And we're excellent about recycling our water program. Our Director of Water Resources, Brian Beesmeyer, has been just absolutely fabulous. And he has been on the forefront of this as long as, you know, with his staff also. But saying that, people also need to be responsible for their own water use. And our city is also looking at ways to give rebates. And the program has been so successful about people who decide to convert their lawns to desert. And also there are lots of homeowners associations that are moving to that in the manner that, you know, how can the city help the new developments, you know, make sure they're responsible? The people who've lived here a long time used to have grass front lawns. I grew up with a grass front lawn, a grass backyard. Not anymore. You know, you have to work, you know, to what's best to, for our city and dealing with the drought. And we have a half grass yard, a half gravel yard now. We didn't when we bought our house 32 years ago. So we have to be responsible for our own use also.
The Blue Zone Initiative is a great addition to our community. Scottsdale is known for being a healthy community. How will you help make Scottsdale a Blue Zone certified city?
So, uh, I am totally in support of Blue Zones. I love that the city is partnered with Honor Health and Blue Zones and bringing it here to the city of Scottsdale and keeping that active lifestyle. My background, Parks and Recreation, I was the Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission, I, for two terms. I love our parks, our green belt. Um, coming this November, there's a question on the ballot, a yes, yes question about preserving, our preserve, our parks. That's part of that healthy lifestyle in the Blue Zones. That's why people come to our city because it's vibrant. It's beautiful. We want to make sure that we maintain our parks, our preserve, our outdoor areas, so people can live that active, vibrant lifestyle. I'm fully in support of it.
We are constantly dealing with short-term rentals, noise complaints. We are, you know, a city destination, city for vacation. You, the city council has already passed many new rules and regulations to short-term rentals and homeowners. The problem's not going away and it's still a nuisance to many neighbors. So what are your suggestions that you're going to bring to council?
So like you just mentioned, the city just did two more, um, ordinances on, you know, kind of putting a little more teeth into it. Can they go further? Yes. But are their hands tied? Absolutely. Our city needs to be working with the legislators and they do, they really do. But they need to make sure that they're always building those relationships and making sure that the state, the governor, understand, we want to be in control. We want autonomy. Each city wants to be able to control what's happening in their city because they have to answer to their residents. And we want our residents to be safe. And I will say our police department, Chief Walter, has been on top of this. They really are responsive. There is a number of residents can call to make sure that they're complaining. If there is a nuisance, they need to make sure that they're calling that number, making sure that that nuisance is recorded and that those promoters of party houses as opposed to vacation rentals have to answer to it. And then they will find out that we're not messing around in Scottsdale. And we have to be responsible and keep the safety of our neighborhoods. We want it to be family-friendly. You don't want a, a family to go, oh, the party house is full again. You want them to say, oh, here's a visiting family. You know, and that it's not some massive bachelorette party. There are appropriate places for that. And they can do it without being a nuisance. And we just need to educate through the Realtors Association, through other groups, through the experienced Scottsdale. When the word gets out that Scottsdale is not going to put up with this, then the appropriate uses will slowly come. But we need to stay vigilant on that also.
We have, uh, a few minutes left and I'd like to just hear from you. Why should we vote for Mary Ann McAllen?
Well, because I'm the real deal. I'm a 59-year resident, like you said. I grew up here in Scottsdale. I love my city. Saying it almost, I mean, it's true. I, I love my city. I met my husband working for the city. My children were raised here. I don't want the city to change as drastically as people feel it is. I want to make sure that it maintains its traditions, our, uh, Western heritage. Do we need to bring people in? Do we need to keep our taxes low? Of course we do. Do we want to hold people responsible for when they come to our city? Yes. But the best way to do that is by being a good neighbor, by being a responsible citizen and by truly loving your city and making sure that other people's love for their city is through action, not just through word. And that a lot of people can throw around a lot of negative comments and say, oh, well, this is bad or this is bad. But what we really need to do is action. You need to volunteer on the commissions, the task force, be the PTO president at your school. I was the PTO president at all my kids' schools. Um, it's just, except for one, I was the vice president. But just the, people need to get involved. They need to know their neighbors. How often do you hear people say that? We need to be building bridges. We need to be building relationships, not just in our neighborhoods, but the next neighborhood over. We need to be working nonpartisan in our city to get what's done for our city, what's best for our city. Not what's best for this group or that group, but for the good of the all. And when you do that, and when you, when you're earnest in your intentions for why you're running, why you want to be a public servant. That's why it's called a civil servant. You are serving the other citizens. You're not serving your ego. You're not serving your wallet. You are serving the citizens. And if you don't want to serve, then move along. I, I truly feel that way. Um, I have got, I've been volunteering since I was in grade school. I've always wanted to run for city council. My youngest child just graduated from high school last year and now I have the time. I'm, I'm leaving my current position with Hospice of the Valley. I've been with Hospice of the Valley the last five years. And I want to dedicate my time to being a servant of the citizens of Scottsdale. It's as plain as that. I grew up here. I love it. There are a lot of people who are new to the city who think it should be one way or another. And I'm telling you, I'm the real deal. I've been here my whole life and I want to continue to give and foster that love for the city. And it doesn't belong to me. It doesn't belong to someone else. It belongs to all of us and we have to work together. We've got to get along with everybody. And we've got to make sure that it's for the benefit of everyone. So for generations to come, so that my grandchildren, which I don't even have yet. My kids are not married, but that I have the time and I have the passion and the desire to run for. And I worked for the city for almost 15 years. I know how the city runs. I've been on commissions. I own a small business. I understand how, um, small businesses need attention in Scottsdale and work well when they work for the benefit of all, not just here or there. And so I'm here to build bridges and build up my community and serve the citizens.
Well, thank you so much for coming on. Best of luck in the election coming up. Please go vote. Early ballots go out or mailed out June, July 5th with the early voting in person on July 30th. I myself love to vote in person. It feels great. In the meantime, please go to Mary Ann McAllen for Scottsdale.com. We have the link in the description of this episode. You can also check it out on YouTube if you're not already watching us there. Thank you, Mary Ann McAllen, and good luck on the elections.
Thank you so much for welcoming me to Scottsdale vibes.
Thank you for listening. Again, go reach out to them. Their link to their website is in the description of this episode, as well as in our YouTube channel. So you can watch them there. In the meantime, follow along, give us some feedback, rate us, follow along on Instagram, social media, everywhere and YouTube. And I look forward to seeing you around town.